February 6, 2018, I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording for this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to do so?
President Kuschmerich.
President.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Present.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Counselor Zarella.
Present.
Public Forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing public hearing petitions, you have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? All right. Do we have members from the school committee and the city auditor's office? Ms. Gregan, did you wish to speak first, or is this in conjunction with the school? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could kindly introduce yourselves just for the viewing public.
I'm Calvin Brooks, I'm city auditor.
Andre Rabanel, superintendent.
Bob Jokla, assistant superintendent, finance and operations.
Good evening. We're here to talk about the $2 million loan order for Longstow Middle School for roof replacement.
Loan Order 01718.
We have conducted a roof study, and through our Building Needs Subcommittee, we met with the consultant who prepared that report, a copy of which that you have. He met with us, went over the three options in repairing or replacing the roof, gutter options, and cupola repair. And after considering the options, the benefits, the costs, the warranties, we've come to the conclusion that the asphalt roof is the most cost-effective solution. The total to perform all those is about between 1.7 million and 2 million. We'll see what the bids will be when it goes out to bid. Tonight, we will be requesting suspension of the rules to facilitate this project, so we can get the work performed this summer, have it ready before school, so we can return classes to the fourth floor.
Motion for suspension of the rules on 01718.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 01718. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
I have a question for Calvin Brooks, and I ask him a question.
You go on suspension of the rules first, Counselor, and then you'll have an opportunity to ask Counselor Squalia.
Why do you require a suspension of the rules if the plan is to work on this project and it's over the course of the summer after the school gets out of session?
Because this project will require an owner's project manager, and the time length to go out and bid for the OPM, and then go out for a designer would, it could potentially delay it a few weeks. We're looking at a very tight timeline, so it's really with the timeline and time being of the essence that we're requesting that.
Okay.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 01718. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous?
01718 be adopted.
Second.
A motion and second to adopt 01718. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Boishman.
How are we going to be financing? We're going to take a bond on this?
Yes, currently, this is a, would be a loan order for the full $2 million. If you go back to the cream-colored sheet that we've been passing around some for the City Hall project, there's what I call budgeted capital spending in there, which is totaling about 2.9 million. So conceivably, this 2 million could be paid off over the next, it'll be a loan order, but we could be paying it off over the next three or four years.
Three or four years?
Yep, yes.
Now, I have one other question.
And if I could just add to that, this is not, this will not be the end of what may be proposed. We, I believe, will be looking at possibly another million dollars for some other work at other schools. We're also looking at, there's been a request from the fire department for a fire engine, so we're holding off on that for a couple of months to see what happens with our snow and ice spending, and see if there are other available funds, free cash, to begin to do some of those things. This one, as been mentioned earlier, we're trying to expedite in order to get the bidding start, the procurement process started, so we can get the work done by the end of the summer.
For the superintendent, one quick question.
You may.
With a $60 million budget plus, do we have a kitty for school repairs in your budget? Because I have never seen it in your, when you came in front of us with a budget.
Yeah, we have a maintenance line in the budget. What's the number in there now? But it's used for all the regular maintenance. This is really a facility issue, replacing a whole roof as opposed to, you know, patching a roof or doing something, you know, smaller, but this is a major facility expense. What's the number that we have roughly in the budget?
It's, it's $200,000 to $300,000 for all the contractors that we have throughout the year on small projects.
That's right. And I was kind of upset, like most of the people here, even the councils, because we all took a tour back when we first started at the Counselor Dina Tally recalls, and Amy Green, and Mike Chris Merrick, and former Councilor Beazel, and the first tour we took was with you and Bob. Can I ask a question? Why did we fix the fourth floor in patching and painting and sealing when we knew the roof was leaking? What was the purpose?
Well, the fourth floor worked because that was being occupied at the time, and it was really more cosmetic than anything else. Without the roof being fixed, you had, you know, paint coming down, and it really looked awful on the wall, and I had students showing up there and parents coming for tours, for open houses and all, and it's kind of like what you do in your own house sometimes. You know, you're not ready to do the whole room or fix the whole roof, but you kind of want to make it look good, so that's why we did it. And that wasn't going out to bid or anything, we did all of that in-house.
Oh, you did it in-house.
Right, and it was really minimal expense. It was the cost of the plaster and the paint, and that was done in-house.
Okay, then I apologize to the public, because I thought you spent thousands of dollars fixing it up.
We did not.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry for saying that. I'm sorry for thinking that.
Counselor Squalia.
The specifics of the renovation plan, I see in your, in your letter here, it says to replace the original slate roof with asphalt shingles, replace the gutter system, and make repairs to the cupola. Now, does this include the recommendation to replace all the low-sloped EPDM roofs?
No. No. The low-sloped, or the flat roofs that are over the auditorium and the gym were replaced about six or seven years ago.
This, this report was commissioned just in November or December of 2017?
Actually, it should be, it was commissioned, and the date on the report is wrong. It should be January of 2018, not 2017.
So is the report incorrect where it says that the EPDM roof is beyond its life expectancy, and that it recommends it should be replaced?
The EPDM, yeah, I believe that is, I believe that is inaccurate, but I can double-check.
So the low-sloped?
That's why, that's why it's not on the list of items to be replaced.
Okay. So the total estimated value that they have is approximately $850,000 for the asphalt shingles?
Mm-hmm.
Now, for the gutter system, there are three different options. Are we going with the least expensive gutter option?
We're going with the original gutter, correct.
Is that a copper gutter replacement, or an in-kind?
Yes, yes. No, it's original copper gutter replacement.
Replacing the copper gutters with new copper gutters?
Yes.
On asphalt, with asphalt shingles?
Correct.
Okay. And the cupola repair, is that the $185,000?
$5,000, correct.
So the total repair cost there is $1.3 million? Where do you come up with the $1.7 million? What else is included in the?
Well, we put in roughly a 20% design charge, and then a 5% OPM charge, and then there could be additional costs above that, so there's a little bit of cushion.
Okay, so just these three systems, are there going to be any plans for the wood around, the wood fascia? Is that included in the gutter repair?
Yeah, it's just, just a gutter.
Just the gutter itself?
Yeah.
Is there any plan for the exterior wood or the mortar joints, as noted in the report?
The mortar joints are actually in pretty good condition, according to the roof consultants who went up there in January. There might need some, might be some touching up that perhaps a contractor could do once they're retained, but it's not, it's not extensive. It's very minor.
Okay, and?
And if I could jump in, the, the way it is right now, the, the gutters are enclosed in, in the wood, and, and the problem with that kind of design is that if the gutter starts to leak, it leaks into the wood structure and rots the wood, it comes out. So I believe this, the proposal that we're doing is just having copper gutters up there without the built-in frame around it.
Right, because the relining of it would be far too expensive.
Right, right, right. And that way, and the other part is too, that with just having the gutters up there, it will change the look of the building a little bit, but if, if the gutter, for whatever reason, leaks, it'll leak onto the ground and not into the wood structure itself.
That's important.
Yes.
All right, great. Let's see, the fourth floor renovations, we know, we touched upon how the fourth floor is now not occupied, correct?
Right.
Is there a plan sometime that's coming before us in the future to renovate the fourth floor after, in the 2018-2019 school year?
Ideally, what we would like to have happen, which is why we're here so early, is if we could get this going and get it to the point where they could begin working on the roof as soon as school was out, and with fewer snow days, that might be sooner rather than later, then as soon as they finish with the roof, we'd be able to start repairing the fourth floor. But, you know, as Counselor Boishman said, there's no need in continuously replacing and repairing the fourth floor if the roof is just going to leak again.
Right.
So that's part of our plan, so you may see us again.
Will your, will your plan be in-kind or in-house, or do you think that you'll need some extensive renovation?
Some of the work could be done in-house, it depends on the structure. Right now, they're actually going to be doing some perforations in the ceiling to try to, some of the work that they're trying to do to assess what needs to be done on the roof might require some repair to the ceiling, so it'll really depend on the extensiveness of the impact of the fixing of the roof, and, you know, the winter, we still have a whole winter to go through with the roof that's there now, so we don't know what impact that's going to have on the fourth floor. So if it's minimal impact on a lot of the rooms, we can do that work in-house, which we've already done, and we do in a lot of our other schools. But if it's more extensive, we might have to go and hire the veterans to do it, or hire a contractor to commit and do the work.
So when you put it out to bid, will there, will it be including exploratory work for the structure of the, of the roof itself, or will that be done prior in this time now?
Well, the, the scope is really limited to, will be limited to the three items that, that are on, that you just mentioned. So what's internal in the classrooms, we'll be looking at ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fleming.
I just want to make it a comment. I'm just, I want to thank you for always being on top of any facility issue that we have. Nothing is ever left till later. Everything is done right when the issue arises. Thank you.
Counselor Dina Tally.
I second Counselor Fleming's comment. I have been frustrated for many months, as many people have. There was a deliberative and needless assault on the city's image a couple of months ago when Fox 25 swooped in and did their hit piece on us, needlessly, and that was by design. The administration communicated months and months ago, as did the school committee, that the roof was always a known issue. It was a matter of timing and securing the funding. There are people who will believe that because of that deliberative assault on the city's image, that that's why this is happening today, and I'm trying my best to tell people that's not the case. I would like people to see, here's proof positive tonight of what you read or hear is never the case, unless you get it from the right sources, that if we do pass City Hall tonight, wouldn't you know, we're fixing the Longstow roof too? Because I've been told for months that if we do City Hall, we can't do the Longstow roof. Here is an example tonight of where that was a fallacy from day one, and it was permeated throughout internet and word of mouth, because it was deliberate. So I'm not happy to see Fox 25 here tonight to run a story on how we're going to fix the roof, because that's good news. They don't want to hear that. And I hope the people who called Fox 25 deliberately, give them a call again and have them come here and do a story on us fixing the roof. I don't think they'll make that call, because that would make the city look good. Hopefully, The Sentinel does a front-page article, because they're good at doing hit pieces in the front page when it's bad news too. Must be a media thing. So the roof is getting fixed, has been stated for two years now, City Hall or not, there's going to be other work that's going to be done soon, because we have the bandwidth to do it, whereas previous years, we didn't have that bandwidth. So I want people watching at home and in the audience tonight to see once again that unless you get it from the proper sources, the information is usually fallacious and deliberate. So I want to thank you, gentlemen, for your patience, and the council for their patience, because we all knew the story, we communicated it to our constituents as best we could, the facts, and they were very receptive to it. We were not happy with the situation at Longstow, we're not patting ourselves on the back that we're now, we're going to fix it. It's just, this is the process that's played out, and by the start of next school year, that roof will be fixed, there will be no more leaking, and then we can mitigate a lot of the other problems in that facility. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
Does this, has the architect considered the high winds on that roof versus putting a metal roof, which would give them at least 50 years of lifetime?
Yeah.
So the, so the cost of, of taking off the slate and preparing the roof is going to be a given, which either way you go. But I'm just worried that down, in the future, that an asphalt roof with those winds could, you'd have a repair cost in the future versus a metal roof, which I don't think you would.
Well, they, when they did their presentation, and there were a number of people that are here tonight that were at the presentation, they talked about hurricane winds, and I think 150 mile-an-hour winds was what was quoted in terms of the, that all three of these roofs are built to sustain, you know, that kind of wind, and actually, a metal roof was not one that was presented. And I don't think we were specific in terms of what kind of roofing would be applied. I don't know if you had any previous conversations about it. But that never came up. It was either replacing the shingles that are there now, the slate shingles, a fabricated shingle that looked like slate, and then the third one was an asphalt roof. And each one had, had issues with them. Some of them, you know, had, were insured if you do it and if you don't do it, so there was a deliberation that took place, but metal roofs never came up, and I'm not sure why.
Thanks.
Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, a number of people in the community have expressed a concern for ongoing maintenance of the school buildings, and I know from being on the committee that there is such a plan, and there is a provision in here for maintenance for this roof, and I was just wondering if you could outline what that plan is for people who aren't aware of what those provisions would be.
Well, the recommendation from the consultant was that to keep the gutter system in good working order going forward. I think the number was about $12,000 a year. So that's something that we would be looking at as we begin the budgeting process for, for next year, well, yeah, for next year.
And, and I think mentioning the gutters is important, because those of you who've been up, you will note that most of the damage and most of the water issues are not from the center, central part of the roof. It was related to that gutter system and the water kind of coming under it and then going down into the sides of the wall. So the new copper gutters and the new asphalt roof will really take care of a lot of those issues that, you know, we were trying to address over and over again, but the massiveness of the project wasn't allowing it to be addressed in a small way. It needed to be the whole enchilada.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
I got one question I want to ask. We're going to make sure, if the, going back to Counselor Squalia said, we're going to replace the fascial boards if it's rotting. We're going to make sure of that? We're not just going to say, replace the roof, fix the gutters, whatever you got, the wood up there is what we got. If the wood is rotting, we're going to replace it. Am I right or wrong?
Well, I think if there's, you know, that's why there's a little bit of extra money for construction contingency, I think, to cover, you know, issues like that.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I seen sometime where the city put our bids, and because we didn't say, put a 2x4 behind that corner over there, so you can make, so we can narrow the sheetrock to it, the contractor didn't do it, because he didn't have to do it, and it wasn't in the bid. And I don't want to drive by there some night and see the gutter hanging down because there was a rotten piece of board that we didn't replace for $15. And I think, if I seem kind of angry, I do get kind of angry on those kind of things, I get mad at the contractor for not doing a good job. And that's why I asked in this question, that's why I was glad she asked it, I want to make sure they do. And we're going with what? If I'm not mistaken, I think when you gave me the paperwork and I read it, we're going with a 25- to 30-year shingle?
Asphalt shingle.
Asphalt shingle. How come we, because a 50-year shingle is not that much more expensive?
There was no option for 50-year. We talked about that, and that question came up, and there was nothing that would be guaranteed that was a 50-year shingle.
Okay.
Because that came up, because I know in, in home, there's an architectural shingle, for example, that people use.
Right.
It is a more durable, that option was not available for the work that needs to be done at the Longstow School.
Okay, because I put a 50-year shingle on my house.
Yeah.
And my final question, if that roof leaks, are we going back after the contractor to do the job right? Or are we going to say, it's all right, we're doing that stuff?
I hope that that's built into the?
Yeah, I hope that's built into the contract, you know, when it goes out for, for bid and all that, so.
And we can make sure that when it goes out to bid, that that's in there, but I know that each of the presentations that we had, either on the slate shingle, the fabricated slate, or the asphalt, had different kinds of conditions of, well, if you do this, and one of them was, if you did this on the surface that's there, they would not be able to insure it, which is why?
Right, I read that.
Which is why we thought, okay, we could be opening ourselves up, we could put something that feels more durable, but because we're putting it over a surface that they haven't approved, they've got an out to say, too bad, it's leaking. So I think that was part of the deliberation that led us to the 30-year asphalt shingle. And, and another part with, with roofs, contracts in general, but with roofs, is normally, construction contracts, there's a retainage that we hold on to, 5% or 10% of the contracted price, and I believe with roofs, sometimes that retainage is held for a period of time to make sure the roof doesn't leak.
Okay.
So that you, you get to run six months or a year before you pay that last amount, just so that the contractor's still on the hook, to make sure at least when it goes on, it doesn't leak.
And this, this question's for Bob. I also read in that report, if I'm not mistaken, maybe you can verify that, do they recommend now putting solar panels up there, because it hurts the roof? Am I right or wrong on that?
Well, of, of the three options, asphalt would be the best roofing material to put solar panels on, that you wouldn't want to put a 20-year system, which, you know, solar systems are generally 20 years, on a 50-year or 75-year shingle, because you wouldn't want to be disturbing it. So I think it's, you know, it's really too early to say if we will or will not be putting solar. I mean, theoretically, it would be great, but it's a different environment than it was a year and a half ago when we put solar panels on Ryan Golden Memorial. The rates that we're getting from Unitil, you know, were 6.9 cents, and now it's 9.9 cents, last time I checked. So economically, the, the return isn't as great, so I don't know if, you know, we'll get the bang for the buck that we used to.
Okay, that's enough for me. Thank you.
Counselor Squalia.
Do we have a plan for the longevity of the building? We, we are going to asphalt shingles, so we have a 20- to 5- to 30-year lifespan on that, and we're planning for maintenance, but do we have a plan for the longevity of the building, figuring that if we get our MSBA funding for the K through 8, do we have a future plan for that building?
Can you explain what you mean by the longevity of the building? I'm not sure what that means.
The usefulness of it as a school building?
Well, part of the study from MSBA will be looking at, you know, the whole district and all of our options, so that's going to be part of the study. So we're going to wait to find out, okay, as we look at the population of the schools, and the best way to distribute that population in the buildings that exist now, and a possible addition, renovation, or new school on the Crocker campus, that's all going to be taken into consideration. But right now, for, part of that 30 years is going to be gone. By the time we open a new school, it's five years. So right now, we've got short-term and long-term things to look at, and what we're looking at right now is, I've got 650 kids that need a place to study for the next at least five years, and that's going to be the Longstow School. So that's why we're doing the roof. And then the study is to then look at all of our real estate and say, what's the best use of this real estate for the student population that we have?
Yes, yeah, and thank you for, I'm glad to see that this roof is getting done. This is, this is really great to see, because, you know, this study was just commissioned in November, December, that's correct? And it was just completed January 2018? It's a good study, I'd like to see it, thank you very much. Is there any MSBA funding for this project? Can we apply retroactively or anything like that?
No.
So this is a full $2 million that the city is paying for?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Fleming.
I was just wondering, in this study where everybody's concerned about the fascia, can you put the PVC wood up there instead of using this regular wood for longevity? I mean, it doesn't rot? I mean, it would be a little bit more money, but just a thought. It's not that much more expensive.
I guess I have to go back. I don't have the expedities to answer that question.
Okay.
I'd have to ask?
It might be something to consider.
And he worked at Mackey for a few years, so.
I learned a lot about materials there, as I keep telling you.
I was expecting a better answer, so.
Worked at Home Depot?
Before Home Depot.
I have a motion and second to approve, Counselors, will be done by roll call. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yay.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yay.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor and Counselors, I want to thank you on behalf of our students. This is going to be a great, and I'm sure the teachers will do a jig tomorrow, knowing that, you know, part of the plan here is to get a good roof over that school, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the, for the.
If there are no objections, we'll now hear a, an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening on February 6, 2018. There were two matters before the Appointments Committee this evening, both reappointments, the first for the Human Rights Commission, term to expire January 1, 2021, from Ms. Barbara Nealan. That was adopted unanimously, and the second for trustees of public burial grounds, term to expire January 8, 2020, from Ms. Diane Olet. That was also accepted unanimously.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve the appointments. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. I want to, to thank both Barbara Nealan and Diane Olet, who are both here with us this evening. Thank you so much for your service to our city and for, for the service in the years ahead. We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Clark.
The Count, the Commission on the Records has gone over the recent records, and they are ready to go.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor, we have two letters of appointments and one letter of reappointments. The first for Mr. Andrew J. Van Hozenga, as a member of the Fitchburg Housing Authority, I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the mayor, we have two letters of appointments and one letter of reap appointments. The first for Mr. Andrew J. Van Hozenga, as a member of the Fitchburg Housing Authority, for a term to expire March 1, 2023. Mr. Van Hozenga will be filling a position of Mr. Paul Fontaine, whose appointment expires on March 19, 2018. The second for Ms. Adrian G. Clark, as a member of the Fitchburg Trustees of Public Burial Grounds, for a term to expire February 1, 2020. Ms. Clark will fill the balance of the term created by the vacancy of Mr. David DeMar, Sr. And the reap appointment letter for Mr. Ian Murray, as a member of the Board of Health, for a term to expire January 1, 2021. Those will all be sent to Appointments. We also have a communication and report from, from myself, Michael Kusmerik, City Council President, regarding the Assistant City Clerk appointments. We'll also send that to Appointments to be, to be heard later on this evening. Other communications received, two such communications, first from Mark Pihawk, Mayor of City of Gardner, and the second for Pension Reserves Investment Management Board. Those will be filed, those will be placed on file at the City Clerk's office. Next on the agenda this evening, Finance Committee. Councilor Gina Tally.
President, Finance met last, last meeting and voted on the following, 01018, for $300,000 to be transferred from available funds to Snow and Ice. That was adopted. 1118, to transfer $24,108 from Police Personal Services, Animal Control Officer, to Police Personal Services, Animal Control Overtime, and credit to Police Other Expenses, Animal Control. That was adopted. 1218, to, ordered that the City of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Mass. Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, FY18, Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant, and the approximate amount of $142,709.24, which is to reduce gang and youth violence. That was adopted. And lastly, 1318, the City of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Department of Fire Services grant, and the approximate amount of $56,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to purchase a new regional fire safety house to be used in teaching fire safety. That was adopted.
I have a motion and second to approve the Finance Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority Meeting of January 16, 2018, for one matter, 31717, Mr. John Ego, petitioner to recognize and address issues with stairs and elevator in the Worcester County Northern Registry of Deeds Building at 202 Boulder Drive, and it was recommended that it be denied. To accept the Committee's report?
Yeah.
I have a motion and second to accept the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority's report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Public Works Committee Meeting of January 30, 2018. The meeting was held at 5:00 PM.
Would the Public Works Committee report be accepted?
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Recessed hearing, 30217, Unitil, to install a new pole number one on Brittany Lane at Rollstone Road. Plan number 3447-L to use its new underground electric riser pole to Brittany Lane Homes. Now declare the hearing resumed. I'd ask a representative from Unitil to join us at the center table. Good evening, sir. How are you? If you could just state your name for the record.
Jim D. with, with Unitil. Yeah, since the mainline pole number 27 on Rollstone Road was okayed to relocate across the street, we now need a pole set on Brittany Lane in order to serve the underground feed to Brittany Lane, and the house is on Brittany Lane. So, I guess that was, yeah, pole number 27, mainline pole was going across the street. So, now we'll need pole, pole number one on Brittany Lane to get out of that bad curve.
Councilor Catty.
During the Public Works Committee, the Commissioner was in favor of doing this, and it passed through Public Safety 5-0.
Thank you, Councilor Catty. Councilor Boishman. Councilor Catty just simply stated that the, the public commissioner, Public Works Commissioner spoke in favor of this, and it was passed out of committee by a vote of 5 to 0.
I got just one question from Unitil.
Okay.
You probably already know how I feel about wires, because I think-
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any plausible way, because now you want to put a pole for Brittany Wayne, Brittany Wayne in there too. Why can't we put one of those boxes I see coming in, then you put the line coming across the way underground on that sidewalk, whatever you want to call it, and over to there, and the other line ties in, and you have no pole, but you have a square box. You know what I'm saying? Because you're moving that pole from across the street to over here, so you're going to bring that wire from over here to here. You just bring that wire over to here to here, underground, and you tie them both in. Could that be done? You know what I'm saying?
I don't.
I don't have it.
Do you have a picture of our plan?
No, I don't have it. I forgot it at home.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the pole is just going to be moved across the street, the mainline pole.
Yeah.
So, we need a, you know, new feed over to a new pole, just, and then that riser will, the existing riser will go to that new pole. So, it'd be one, you know, one line coming across the street, you know, for each utility.
All right.
So, it shouldn't be a major problem. All right, Counselor.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second to approve 30217. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Loan orders. Counselor Zarella.
I am going to step out, as I am still accused from this matter. I would ask that someone come get me one this morning.
Absolutely. 00418, loan order, ordered that $22,500,000 be appropriated to pay cost of renovating, reconstructing, making extraordinary repairs, and equipping the existing City Hall Building, 18 Main Street, and Bank of America Building, 700 Main Street, as outlined in the enclosed order. This will be done by roll call.
Will 00418 be sent to its final reading?
I have a motion and second to send 00418 to its final reading. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Councilor Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Catty?
Yes.
Councilor Squalia?
No.
Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Zarella?
Is absent.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councilor Boishman?
Yes.
Councilor Clark?
Yes.
Passes.
The motion carries by an eight to one vote. 00518, loan order, $1 million to be appropriated for the purpose of paying cost of feasibility study on the Crocker Elementary School, 200 Bigelow Drive, Fitchburg, Mass., for K through 8 and K through 8 Project, as outlined in the enclosed order.
Will 00518 be sent to its final reading?
I have a motion and second to send 00518 to a roll call vote. We're just going to wait until Councilor Zarella has rejoined us. Madam Clerk.
Councilor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Councilor Fleming?
Yes.
Councilor Green?
Yes.
Councilor Catty?
Yes.
Councilor Squalia?
Yay.
Councilor Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councilor Boishman?
Yay.
Councilor Clark?
Here.
Unanimous.
Motion carries unanimously. Orders Finance, 01818.
Will 01818, up to and including, 02118, be sent to Finance?
I have a motion and second to send 01818, up to and including, 02118, to Finance Committee. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Will 02218 be accepted?
I have a motion and second to accept 02218 as outlined, as stated on the agenda and as outlined in the, the inclusion of today's agenda. And that reads, order that the City Council does hereby affirm the vote taken on January 2, 2018, at its organizational meeting regarding Order 1, 2018, adopting rules of the City Council for the year 2018 as detailed in the attached minutes of said meeting. I have a motion and second. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Petitions, 02318.
Will 02318 and through, 02618 be sent to their respective committees?
I have a motion and second to send 02318, up to and including, 02618, to their respective committees. Just a point of note regarding 02618, a surcharge, a surcharge would require special legislation at the state level. This information would need to be forwarded to committee for review and a recommendation along with this petition. I have a motion and second. All the, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, counselors. Appointments Committee meeting will be held momentarily, followed by a special meeting of the City Council.